Welcome, everybody, to the June two, June nineteenth Farmington School Board meeting. We already called the meeting to order earlier this evening. We had some non-publics, so I will ask you to please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Um, we are going to be opening a public hearing this evening. So I will just read the public hearing into the minutes and then we'll leave that open um for the majority of the meeting and then we'll give opportunity for anybody to have any input. Uh, to the inhabitants of the town of Farmington, you are hereby notified that the Farmington School Board will hold a public hearing for the purpose of expending the following funds from capital reserve and contingencies set aside, which the board is agent to expend, pursuant to RSA 198:20-C to expend up to forty thousand dollars from the Farmington School District Construction and Renovation Fund and pursuant to RSA 198:20-C to expend up to seventy thousand dollars from capital improvement and renovations. Also pursuant to RSA 198:4-A to expend up to one hundred thousand dollars from the contingency set aside voted by the Farmington School Board on November fifteenth, twenty twenty-two from the fund balance of the twenty twenty-three school year.
Can I have a public notice?
Uh, sure.
I'd like to enter to the record that your-
Can you just step to the, or do we need to move over here?
Yeah, I can move them right there.
Okay, or unless you could hear from here, you tell me.
Is it picking enough?
I can check my voice.
Yeah, I can hear.
So your public notice, the first thing references RSA 198-4-A. The proper RSA is 198-4-B. And I have a copy if you'd like to review it.
Okay.
The two RSA's prior 198-20-C are correct. However, the RSA requires the subject matter of the public hearing. And I would submit to the board that the subject matter of tonight's public hearing is to expend the forty thousand and expend the seventy thousand for the purpose of repairing or replacing the sprinkler system at Valley View School. So I don't believe your, your public notice is legally sufficient. I'd object to the public hearing being held tonight.
Thank you.
Make motion, make motion to re-post the public hearing at the next available meeting, which is July tenth. Correct. Without a proper posting, we can't hold a public hearing.
And we're, with all due respect, Mr. Brown, we're sure this is a mistake?
Well, I don't know, that's what I was trying to ask.
I wanted to see what was in the notice. Do we have the notice with us, Cheryl?
Well, it's on the, it's on the agenda.
Okay, yes, but I guess it does not, it does not include.
It doesn't include?
Does not include.
Okay. So we will not be holding the public hearing. So Mary, your motion was to re-post?
Reposted table tonight's public hearing, repost it with a proper notation for July tenth. We do have, yeah, we have time.
Mm-hmm. We do.
Can I have a public notice?
Yeah, well, we have it, yeah. Uh, did we have a second on that motion?
I'll second.
Uh, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And that was for July tenth?
July tenth.
All right.
The hundred thousand expires June thirtieth.
We have a ten-day posting.
Seven-day posting.
Okay, so we'll do... It'll have to be...
That's going ninth?
Yeah. I mean, or... Between the, we can do it the twenty-seventh and, or yeah, does the weekends count?
Yes, they do.
Okay, good.
So between the twenty-seventh and-
Yeah, if we can get it in tomorrow, we'll potentially post for it.
Okay.
So maybe the twenty eighth?
Twenty eighth to twenty ninth. Do we have board members available?
Sure.
Um-
It only takes three.
June twenty eighth?
Or twenty ninth?
Twenty ninth?
Four. Just checking my calendar.
I am available.
Would it be an evening meeting? Most likely, but that's up to board.
I, I would prefer... It doesn't matter, I'll make it work.
Well, what would you prefer?
Thursday, but, um, but whatever, I can do either one, I just-
Are you, will you do Thursday?
No, I can make Thursday, I should be able to make Thursday where I just needed, yeah.
I've been Thursday.
What do you? Okay, so twenty ninth?
Thursday.
Thursday, twenty ninth.
What time?
Six.
Six.
Okay.
Do we need to make another motion since we... Oh, I can- You want to amend, amend the motion that is-
Oh, that's right, you, because you specified the date.
Yeah. I'll step that probably on that one. I could take a new motion to take that one off the table, do the same thing, only the date being June twenty ninth, six P.M., public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, um, moving on to public participation. Welcome back.
Is your phone?
Yeah.
The chairman of the board, on a positive note, and some of the board members witnessed it firsthand, either live or on TV, I want to congratulate Mr. Adams, Mr. Larkum, on the high school graduation. Specifically noted that Mr. Adams shined with his passion, with his smile, his genuineness, sincerity throughout the entire process. Behind the scenes, it was clear that Mr. Larkum helped with the organization and made sure that the process went smoothly. I know from past years that Mrs. Moody played a large role in preparing the graduation. I'm sure there's others that I don't know. So in order not to miss anybody who want to congratulate Mr. Adams and his team on the job they're doing. Please allow me to address the board, speak of the district financial positions. These notations and what I'm going to speak about tonight has come from all documents that the board has received. The Treasuries Report filed with the school district indicates that there's a cash balance of eight hundred and fifty-five, six hundred and ninety-six dollars and ninety-three cents at the beginning of this fiscal year. There was also three hundred and eighty-three-ish thousand dollars in covered last year. The audit speaks about five hundred thousand dollars in fund balance adjustments and over four million dollars in general entries. In seven years being involved in financial, I've never seen four million dollars in general entries on either the town side or the school district side. The numbers just don't make sense, they don't align. Current Treasuries Report refers to a general ledger beginning balance of two hundred and seventy-four thousand, seven hundred and eighty-one ninety-three. Mathematically, it's confusing and it defies logic. More concerning is this year's current budget that you're in now. Your Fund Ten report shows a total allocation of sixteen million, two seventy-three, nine seventy-four. That total is derived from the Warren article appropriation of fifteen million, eight hundred and six dollars, one oh nine and seventeen cents, plus two hundred and forty-five thousand in fund balance Warren articles. And then we add to that a special deliverative session of two hundred and twenty-two thousand, eight hundred and sixty-five. That sixteen million, two hundred and seventy-three, nine seventy-four budget is funded a hundred percent. That money comes from adequacy aid, which is the local and state sweat money. It comes from revenues and what's not made up is made up by taxation. When you look at your all-revenues report, your all-revenues report is funded at fourteen million, eight hundred and sixty-two dollars, six hundred and thirty-three dollars and eight cents towards Fund Ten. That leaves one million, four hundred and eleven, three hundred and forty-one dollars in unaccounted funds that's been raised and appropriated. Tonight, you sit here at your last schedule of what was your last scheduled meeting of the year. Look at tonight's agenda. There's no agenda item to encumber money. Last year, we spent three hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars on summer payroll for teachers that received their checks over the summer and other outstanding bills that we need to purchase this year out of this year's budget. That's not on the agenda. The only one who can lawfully encumber money is this board. That's not there. Without that encumbrance, I don't think you have money to make the payroll for these summer checks. Around May of this year, the board learned for the first time that bank records couldn't be reconciled. That would have been obvious July first, twenty twenty-two, almost one year prior. I have to ask you as a board, how does that happen? When you as a board are charged with managing the credential affairs of the school district? How do you as a school board function with no information or bad information that's given to you? Our next fiscal year starts July one. The entire board's aware that I prepare to draft complaint on the budget process used to fund next year's budget. I understand council's been occupied and I've given them time to come up with a solution. Aside from that darkened, I have since learned that the most critical key fact in your budget which starts July one, and yes, I sign that, is that at the public hearing on video and in the approved minutes, the superintendent of schools stated there is no Easter monies in the default budget. The truth is, there's over a million dollars in that budget for Easter monies. That makes Warren Article Three defective. It was posted with Easter monies in it, over a million dollars. You can't add, once the public hearing is closed, money to that budget process. If Warren Article Three is thrown out or found illegal, how do you operate after July one? All these reports are a matter of public record. Preparation of public records determines ethics, honesty, and accuracy. I would suggest to the board, remind the board, that under RSA six forty-one seven, it is a crime to knowingly make a false entry, a false altercation of anything belonging to, received, or kept by the government for informational record and required by law to be kept living information of the government. In closing, would you like to speak to a topic you're passionate about? Last year, I approached this board with a donation of software which exceeds twenty thousand dollars in cash value. The donation was made because of the obvious defects that appeared in the district plans for the immediate life safety of staff and students. The superintendent of schools has chosen not to implement the board's direction because of personal and political bias against me. In considering this, consider the liability that has been placed on the district by the superintendent of schools by not fixing these deficits. Take a look at the monies paid out in Florida and the multi-million dollar lawsuit filed today against Michigan State University for failing to protect when they knew of deficits. More importantly, think about the value of the student's life, and the staff member's life that would have not been saved if these things were, were not in place. In last year, our company wasted over a thousand dollars a month in bills that we had to pay for hosting and meeting the federal enforcement requirements, all because of politics with life safety becoming secondary. Superintendent's review is tonight, and we're just in a scheduled public session. I make no recommendation as this is the duty placed on the board. I only ask that you, that you listen, take these concerns into account, and do what is best for our district, our students, our staff, and our taxpayers. I'm horrified that I don't have an accurate number, but the number I've heard, forty members by district are bailing out, hemorrhaging, snot, deceased. That is awful. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public participation? Seeing none, we'll move on to minutes?
Yeah, oh, I think there is.
Oh.
It's like sat in the back.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Is, yeah. Is this a presentation that I've seen?
No, you might have, just say, yeah.
It should be-
Better with that.
Well, just to follow the proper chain of command.
So, okay, no, we'll talk then.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else hiding in the back that I might not see? I'm a short person. All, all good for public? All right, minutes? I will entertain a motion to approve minutes of June fifth?
Chief, there are only minutes of June fifth, public, non-public, one, two, three, and four.
Second?
I need to-
Sorry.
Any discussion?
No. I just have one comment.
Yep.
When we have a board member not in attendance, if they've spoken with you before, we should probably call them excused as opposed to absent.
Hmm, or like, yeah, because I think we used to do like excused in parentheses.
Yeah, yeah, and that's because three absences in a row without that terminology-
Right.
Could, could and, and might constitute three of them, and I don't want that to happen.
Yes.
And you-
Which you were. Yep.
Okay.
So as amended?
Yes, yes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'd be happy to move the minutes of June seventh, public, non-public one, uh, and non-public one, sorry.
Can we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We shall move, if I may, June seventh, non-public session two sealed to our non-public meeting later this evening.
Mm-hmm.
And having said that, I will move the public, uh, June twelfth, public session and non-public one and two as written.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, reports, SRO.
Everybody, I just wanted to go over a month of May. A monthly statistics for the month of May. Um, number of incident reports for the Farmington High School were eight. Uh, the Henry Wilson School was twenty-one. The Valley View was twelve. Um, there was one incident on a bus and one incident within the district. Some of the business that we're looking forward to in July. Um, SRO Ryan Clark will be attending the Nazro School. It's a basic National Association for School Resource Officers Training Academy. Uh, he'll be attending that. The Valley View, simple assault, um, was more common than any other type of thing that we responded to or investigated. Um, Henry Wilson School, it was, um, simple assault and just general police services. Um, Farmington High School, um, was general police services, uh, simple assault, um, that, that had the highest numbers. Do you have any questions in regards to the calls for service? Or any of the graphs that were provided in the report?
I think so, I mean, is there anything, are there any that are abnormally high? Or is that-
No, as a matter of-
Given the time of year that everybody's getting a little rambunctious?
Yeah, correct, as a matter of fact, I, I saw a downward trend in the month of May. Um, we didn't really spike too high, so the month of May was pretty good. Um, March was, was relatively high. We, we went down in the month of April and pretty much continued on that trend in May. Was very pleased with, um, how everything's gone. Kids are excited about going into summer, there's a lot of activities at the end of the year, um, and we did well.
Anybody have any questions for Chief Orlando?
I'm good.
Thank you.
One of the other topics I just wanted to bring up-
Oh, sure, yeah, absolutely, sorry.
Um, the fiscal year ends in June, um, and I had mentioned the startup costs. You have a list of the things that we did purchase, um, leading up till now. Uh, there is a remaining balance of twenty-nine thousand, five hundred and sixty-five dollars and forty-five cents. Um, there are a few different items, uh, they're the more expensive items, so I just wanted to have a conversation with the board. Um, i-if you want me to expend that, the startup cost, or talk further about it, um...
And, and some of these may be public and some of these may be non-public discussion depending upon what the items are.
Yeah, I was just about to say that, so.
Have we gotten that total dollar amount approved through SRO?
Um, it is in the SRO piece at this, because it's part of the contracted service, we did have approvals on it.
I mean, do, do we need a motion to make those purchases? Or are you, if they've already been approved?
Well, the, the dollar amounts have been approved, not necessarily the individual items.
Okay.
Um, there is a dollar amount in that for startup cost.
Okay.
Not the individual items, and some of these may be things that are discussion points.
Okay, so do we want to move that part to, we can continue in non-public or?
Probably, and, and perhaps at another juncture?
Yeah. Okay, awesome. We shall do that. Valley View.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, I like the podium, I'm sorry, I just feel a little bit more important and, you know, it just represents-
That's why I write with a red pen, it's okay.
Hey, it's all good.
It's really about just calming the nerves.
What's that?
It's really just about calming the nerves.
It is, you see, you can't see what's happening under your hair.
Yeah, exactly, I know, I got that.
They're leaving me hanging out though. Um, so I submitted my report, um, and, uh, if you have any questions, you're free to ask. I'm just gonna skip over that. Um, I want to say thank you to the board for allowing me the opportunity to, um, show recognition to faculty and staff. Um, I have decided to kind of change course a little bit, but I still want to invite the board to see the presentation of, uh, Mr. Collopy and I had been working on some, uh, recognition certificates for the faculty and they're all kind of custom tailored to the faculty because it's a great group. We'll get to them in a second, um, but we are having a celebration on Friday at nine A.M. And board members, you're welcome to attend as long as you're not breaking any sort of rules that I'm, you know-
Quorum.
Not abiding by, yes, the quorum. Um, so as many folks know, I put it out there to our families, at the end of the school year, I am leaving. Um, I've spent the last four years at, uh, in the Farmington School District and it's been a wonderful four years. Can say I've had one of your children.
Very thankful for you.
And the same, same name, I love it.
Thank you.
But I have to say, uh, the Farmington School District is a very special place. Uh, people are passionate about, um, people in this, the town of Farmington are passionate about the education that the children receive. They're passionate about the overall community, Farmington. It's a very unique community, um, and I feel fortunate to have been a part of it, um, for my, my time here. Uh, it wasn't an easy decision to go, um, and quite frankly, you know, we all have things in our lives that pop up and you just need to do what's right for your personal life. And that's, that's what I'm doing and, um, my next opportunity is to get back into teaching, which I'm very excited about. Um, I'm gonna miss my faculty and staff this year. Um, has been, you know, a year, to say the least. Uh, we've talked about it here at meetings, we started the year down seven positions. We had people really band together. We have three of them over there. Um, we have our, the majority of our third grade team over there, um, that are here tonight and, you know, uh, to support the Farmington School District. But, um, it's been a year of trials and tribulations, um, but a lot of successes as well. Uh, and I feel like that's how we're rounding out our school year. We saw some great successes, um, both academically and socially within our building. And I'm very, very proud of that. Uh, and that's, um, one of the reasons why I really wanted to recognize everyone in our building because one thing that I've learned over my four years at Valley View is it's not just one person that makes things run. It's not just one person that makes change, not one person that makes successes. It's, it's, it's a community, it's a collective group. Uh, every single person in that building has made changes in all of our students' lives and I hope they know that and I'm gonna do my best to make sure that they realize that before I head on out. Um, a couple of folks in particular I just really need to give, um, some recognition to. Uh, we call it, we call her our double-up diva superhero, whatever, you know, if we want to get a little, whatever D-word you want to use for her. Um, but Ms. Cook, um, has been one of those folks that has showed so much flexibility this year. Has been there every morning, willing to, you know, if, if we needed her to, to jump in because we were down two UAs this year. Um, if we needed her to jump in and take an extra class, she'd do it at the drop of a hat. Um, and I just want to thank her for, for everything she's done for our kids. She's a wonderful teacher, um, one of the best I think I've ever seen, uh, right on top of it and, um, just a, a great person to be around. Um, I also wanted to thank, um, our substitutes that came in. We had one substitute this year that took on the music role three days a week midway through the year, kind of made it her own and I think revitalized her career. Too bad she's retired, so you can't have her five days a week, but we do have a great music teacher coming in next year that I know we're both very excited about. Um, but I'd like to thank Mrs. Pelkey. Um, some of your kids may have had her in first grade, but, uh, I mean, she really stepped up this year and, um, re-immersed herself into our community. Uh, Julie Lord, if it wasn't for Julie, we would have been down a pre-K paraprofessional all year long. She was there every day. She had a, a better attendance record than I did. But always there, uh, worked with the kiddos and, you know, was, was more than willing to kind of move around if needed. Amy Bruhl Yard, Stephanie Rue, Rachel Bowden, and someone new this year. Keep this name in the back of your minds, folks. I want to call her Katie Perry, but that's not her name. Katie Tyler was another one. That, all of those folks were there nearly every day, making sure that the kids were getting what they needed in the classroom. They were more than just substitutes. They were educating our children and helping keep our community going. And in that, you know, that's just the tip of the iceberg. To say, honestly, I don't know what to say about the faculty and staff. I personally couldn't have gotten through the school year without them. They were supportive to me, and I appreciate everything that they did, every way that they stepped up, and throughout it all, always keeping the children first. So, I'm gonna miss, miss all the Tigers at Valley View, miss all the teachers at Valley View. Great people. I made a lot of friends over the years, and I know things are gonna keep on going in a positive direction. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Blake.
All right, Henry Wilson.
So, for two years now, I've had to follow Blake pretty consistently. And it's a really tough position because he's such a good speaker, and he remembers everybody and everything. We started together, our admin in Farmington, as A.P.s four years ago, and it has been a ton of fun, and I am going to miss you immensely, Blake.
And we have a no crying policy here.
I know. You're making me tear up.
I wanted to point out the retirement of Mrs. Downs. I'm not sure how long she's been here, and the last time I asked her, she couldn't remember how long she's been here. Joel, how long has she been here? A thousand years?
We talked about that.
We asked, we did, I wrote it down somewhere, actually.
It's a lot, thirty?
Yes. It's thirty plus.
And the picture in my principal's report, I just think it's the most beautiful picture of our parents. They support each other. They love each other. And Downsy is going. It's her granddaughter's graduation from eighth grade, and she is going to be leaving with her. So, that's really hard. And like Blake said, we have a very special community here, and so to see her leave is gonna be a tough one. Really isn't much else I want to talk about. You know, we have the graph. Semi was wonderful. The data's pretty much very similar to last year. So, I don't think there's anything else unless you guys have any questions.
Oh, did we not talk about Eddies? Because we didn't want to steal your thunder at the last meeting.
We went to Eddies. We went in Eddies. So, yay. It was fun.
We briefly talked about it, but we weren't sure what you were gonna say, so we didn't want to take away from you.
Yep, we did. I think it's remarkable. I think that what you guys are doing at Henry Wilson, from administration all the way down to the teaching staff, really relying on data. I know personally, as a parent, but now on this side as a school board member, just seeing the difference and the difference that you're making in the district and with the students, and it's remarkable. So, I just hope that we can continue to go in that direction and that trajectory. And, yeah, so congratulations. It's a lot of hard work. It's not always easy. I know that.
Thank you.
So, nice job.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right, FHS.
Ah, so, two tough hacks to follow here, so, right? Here I am. I've got the traditional board report, so nothing special coming from me. But first, happy Juneteenth, everybody. So, it's, as people have alluded to, this is a busy time of the year, and it's been a busy time at the high school. We had a series of events this past month, leading off with our spring concert. And even though our band numbers are small and our chorus is small, McSalt did a fantastic job with these guys. They put on a fantastic show. It was a good audience that we had. And, you know, I'm sorry to see that she's leaving at the end of this year. But like Valley View, I think we've got a fantastic music teacher coming in. So, we're gonna hopefully see that program take off and really grow in the next couple of years. Blues in the school, this is the last time I'll talk about it, but I just have to bring it up one more time because T.J. Wheeler really did a great job in our school. He worked with five different classes over the course of four weeks. He wrote songs with two different classes. He gave a performance as a culminating event. And it was, it was just great to have him here and to share his wealth of knowledge about, not just blues and music, but about the world in general. I know our kids really enjoyed having him here. And then, of course, the big events, Last Chapel and Graduation. We had graduation on June tenth and Last Chapel the day before on June ninth. Just, I was so impressed by our seniors and their speeches. Hannah Smith gave a great speech. Of course, Jess Brown, Mr. Brown was just here, did a fantastic valedictorian speech. Madison Brunel, salutatorian, who we had to sort of talk into giving her speech. She wasn't gonna do it, but she did, and she did a great job. But I also really want to thank Cheryl Moody and Eric Larkham because they were behind the scenes doing everything. Those two really pulled it together, made sure that everybody knew where they were supposed to be. Everybody was acting the way they were supposed to act. They really deserve a tremendous amount of credit. And then, you know, finally, we gave out over twenty thousand in scholarships, which is great, too. That's all from me. Unless you guys have some questions.
Just a comment. I would echo what Mr. Brown said, but I'm gonna add one of the compliments to you that he didn't mention. And that is pronunciation of names. That's always a sticking point with me because it sometimes speaks to not practicing. And I thought you really did a nice job of, you know, pronouncing names because everyone wants to hear their names said correctly, especially parents. And I thought that Last Chapel and Graduation were fantastic. I watched during Last Chapel, Mr. Larkham doing small, behind-the-scenes things. Things like, and at graduation, getting certificates in a specific order after he saw which student was coming up first in the moment. And unless you're someone who plans and does a lot of events, you may not pick up on that. But that helps it go smoothly. And I'm gonna just thank one other person for you, and that is Diana Jansen. Because she, Diana, I know that Cheryl takes more of a lead role in graduation, but Diana was here several nights in a row till seven, seven-thirty. In fact, one night, eight o'clock, with Cheryl supporting what she needed. So, they did a, her and Cheryl did a great job. They worked well together.
Yeah, thank you for bringing up Diane. Because, because a lot of times Cheryl was out of the office that week, too, because she was running graduation practice, and Diane wasn't, you know, holding down the fort by herself, so.
Yeah, and I'd also like to give a shout-out to KJ Cardinal for doing the video for both Last Chapel and Graduation, for those that couldn't be there, and to save for posterity.
And captured some fantastic photos.
And photos, yes. So, but yeah, all went well. Anybody have any questions?
Thanks.
Sure. Okay, yeah.
So, there are two people that, like, I can't believe I forgot to mention. We have two folks retiring this year. One who has been in the Farmington School District for thirty-nine years, Mrs. Sandy Bella Vance. And also a paraprofessional who's been there right alongside her almost the entire time for thirty-two years, Martha Fantasia. These are two incredible women who have done so much for, I would say, generations of the Farmington community. So, we wish both of them the best as they take their next steps into their lives. I know grandchildren are gonna be a big part of those, and I hope they have a lot of fun with them. And I just want to thank them for all of their service over the years, so, thank you.
New business, National Honor Society Scholarship Donation.
So, National Honor Society, for the last year or so, has started a scholarship for those Hoover trustees. They've done fundraising for that this year. That money, in order to go to the trustees to, well, be able to expect, needs to be accepted by the school board in order for a check to be cut to the trustees. So, because it's raised under the auspices of the district. So, right now, they have, this year they voted to award two scholarships, the amount of five hundred dollars. They have raised the money for that, but they need to give the money to the trustees. And then, that thousand-dollar check would need to be approved by the board or accepted by the board in order for that money to go forward.
All those in favor?
Now, we can give the minutes to the trustees, and we can take the next steps.
Anybody's, what'd you say?
That's it.
Oh. Unfinished business, we have an update on the sprinkler system.
So, with the sprinkler system, and I gave the email that we've received to the board. It's in your folder. We had put out a bid for contractor to be working on that sprinkler system. We'd awarded the bid. Contractor has come back, and because of staffing is unable to fulfill the requirements of that bid. So...
Staffing of the...
His own staffing, yes. He's lost staff members and is unable to do that this summer. So, coming back to the board to see what it is that you would like to do. Do we want us to go back to the other bidders? Do you want us to reopen the bid entirely? You know, Larry was, I don't know if you were successful in getting hold of those other bidders. Could you come join us?
Yes, I've been able to contact the president of Capital Fire, one of the other bidders, to get clarification on the power where he had put in the bid that it might take two consecutive summer vacations to do work. He said they have a commitment to do an attic in another school this summer that he wanted. He put that in just to be upfront, to let us know that there's a possibility that it wouldn't get done completely. They did say he could work on it through other holidays and stuff if needed, but we didn't really get into specific talks until we found out where probably want to proceed.
And who was the other? Because we had...
Keaton Pat Fire.
Okay.
But they were the ones that wanted to just replace, right? Like portions of it?
They were doing well, but they're the ones that had a lot of stipulations about not wanting to really do it in hot weather and some other stipulations, a lot of access points they wanted to make.
Right, make like holes, like cut in, holes into the walls and, yeah.
Is there an opportunity for anyone else out there, or did we...
I put out, I got answers from, I think we went, I think they put out six different ones. Three of them basically came back and said that they just couldn't do it in the timeframe we had or that they were too busy to do it.
Is a patch or a Band-Aid, are we down?
No, I mean, we haven't had much trouble in the last month and a half.
It only takes once.
Yes, I know. The thing that Matthew from Capital Fire did say was that, especially multi-purpose from power with the dryhead sprinklers, that those are basically a special, a lot of people don't just stock them. So, the decision would should be, are we gonna go with somebody to start ordering those to get them in place? Because there could be a wait time on them.
And did he indicate, if they were able to start this summer and not finish, what does that look like?
Well, basically, even with the Superior Fire who was going to do it, it was going to take more than the summer. But they all seem to think they can work on sections at a time. I mean, they could do certain sections, and if they had to stop, it would be, the system would be up and running. It would just be, they'd have to continue.
I mean, I am sick of looking at Valley View sprinkler system on the agenda. So, I mean, my feeling is if Capital Fire can get in here this summer and start it, that would be my preference. I can't really remember. I would have to look back at the quotes if it was...
Two twenty-nine, ten.
My computer's...
Two hundred twenty thousand, nine hundred and ten. That was price number two. That was replaced. That was the new piping. Replace all.
What was the cut, what was the difference, though?
So, to just replace, kind of do the Band-Aid, like, that was one hundred thousand, five hundred and forty from Capital.
We'd be looking at doing the full replacement, but just potentially in pieces rather than rip everything out at once.
I don't have it from, was there a big price between Superior and...
I think Superior, I think, was around two twenty-three, I think.
So, it wasn't...
It, right, and I don't have the, let me look at it.
That was... It was in last week's or...
Right here. Superior was, yeah, two twenty-three, eight. But we had decided to go with, if I remember correctly, Superior because they could get in quicker. And they were gonna be like two consecutive summers and...
Also, we're gonna have to have as many access points made, which I also talked with Capital about, and said they could come in, reevaluate.
Yeah, maybe they should look at what Superior was gonna do. You know?
We do have, we have located ninety-eight percent of the money.
Right.
And the dumpster, that was the other thing. Maybe we could talk to Capital about... Because they weren't gonna pay... So, maybe we could see if they could do some of the things that were in the bid for Superior.
Have them come back in and look at what we are looking to do and see if they can get it done?
So, is that a motion?
Sure. Motion to have Capital Fire come back and revisit.
Reevaluate?
Yes, please. Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Larry. Spring, oh.
Couple unfinished.
Sure.
Main stage. Just keep rolling main stage over. They were supposed to come in February and, uh, Christmas, and then February, and then April. Will they be in this summer?
I am cautiously optimistic. There are, we have been leaning on the switch company to get those in here. We have a potential of July, but until I have switches in house, one, I believe it's one of twenty-eight or twenty-nine switches has arrived. So, we need the others before we can really start that project.
Anticipated fund balance? Or do you want to just table that until...
I'm not at a point where I can really speak to that.
Safe school zone and data management. Uh, safe school zone and data management in Fort Santos, June?
You say safe school zone. That's part of the safety report that the principals do, yes.
Okay, means our.
And then we have EOI reports that are done by all buildings at all levels. And then, um, inter-quality reports are also done by the principals in conjunction with Larry.
The SLC check, not being, we prepaid roughly a hundred thousand, I think.
Yes.
And we've only had services for a short amount of that money.
So, we received a rebate on the, on the other portion of it.
So, the money's back?
Yes.
Okay, cool. Um, my last question is live stream tonight. I mean, two weeks ago, we came in and we weren't able to livestream. And that was, I was under the impression it was gonna be the next day to finish.
As was I, and I will follow up and see again where we are.
Okay, thank you.
The meeting was online by eleven thirty that night.
Yeah.
No, I know, but.
Yeah. All right. Sorry, my computer just did an update, so.
That's why it go blue and thinking, I was like, oh.
Bad, bad timing. All right. Uh, superintendent evaluation. Um, I don't know how we wanna do it. I don't know.
Madam Chair, I would ask, this is.
That we don't.
Different to have it on the public agenda?
Right.
I understand that's your choice.
Mm-hmm.
I'm gonna ask you and be really clear, you want the public to hear your evaluation right now?
Yes, I do.
I, I personally believe that reputation comes into play. But it is your choice. How do you wish to do this, Madam Chair?
Um, I just, I thought I had a printed copy and apparently my printed copy did not. Oh, it came blank. The two pages that were behind it, so, sorry, everybody. Technical difficulties on all fronts today. Um, does it make sense, I mean, to go through each?
I don't think we have a choice. I think we have to read it and see what, how people feel.
Yeah, I guess. I, I don't know a better way to do it, unless anybody has any suggestions.
I mean, I would ask our two, two new members, being that you've been on the board for a short time, how did you approach the process?
So, I personally didn't feel comfortable filling out an evaluation, having only been on the board for a very short time. Um, so, I opted to just sit here so I can just listen to what you guys had for reflections. Um, I felt like it wasn't gonna be fair for me to give advice or to fill out the whole evaluation, having just a short time and having been excused from one of the meetings. Um, so, that's where I'm at.
So, um, I attempted the evaluation, but a lot of mine, I put the lowest score that, uh, not applicable because I haven't experienced it yet. So, I agree, um, being so fresh, I'd have mine. But most of it is, I haven't seen this, so I don't know how to evaluate it.
All right. So, we will start off?
I will again say, I don't like the tool.
Oh, yeah, me neither.
I've never really liked the tool. Um.
Open to.
Yeah.
moving forward with something else, but this is what.
The tool we have is essentially a checklist, uh, with ratings of.
Can, can I just actually say one thing though, just, um, before this, having looked at it, yes, I do agree with that. Um, I also think that personally, I would like to see evaluations, just like teachers get a mid-year and a check-in and an end of year. I would just like us as a board to perhaps consider, um, maybe a mid-year review and an end-of-the-year review, just like we expect our teachers. Um, if there's something that we want our teachers to improve on or if they're not meeting expectations, um, we give them feedback and give them an opportunity to do that. I think something in writing. I'm not saying that you haven't given Superintendent, you know, Vaughn, that opportunity. Um, but I think just something in writing in the future, um, would be helpful. I mean, it's what we expect of our staff members, so I think it would only be fair.
I almost think that we may have to go into the direction of a superintendent evaluation policy or procedure.
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
So that it's.
Is it there a?
Well, I'm here listening. Policy.
I thought it was December.
There was a form that was adopted at one point and then it was decided it was too long and then there was a short form and then it was.
Was too short?
Well, that was, well, that was supposed to be at this time and that was supposed to be at that time and I said, okay, we've got, and then it wasn't done. And I said, well, this is my job description, how would you like to proceed? And it became this. I mean, I'm not wed to this, but this is what we've had. So, again, s- certainly moving into next year, one of the goals could be to revisit the evaluation process and look at evaluation instruments that make more sense. I'm absolutely open to that. Um.
And I have looked on the New Hampshire School Board Association at some of, um, the documents and some of the tools. Um, they actually have something on there for the school board members for us to evaluate ourselves as well, which I really don't think is a bad idea.
Yeah.
I think that if we're gonna hold everyone accountable, I think we need to hold ourselves accountable as well, so, um, that's just, I just wanted to put that out there. That's all.
Are you connected to that printer?
Um, I have a new computer, so I don't know what I have.
Okay, that's all right.
You looking for a blank?
Yeah, do you have one?
I might.
I have a blank blank.
There's just two blanks.
Yeah. I will say that on item number two, it lists on the top of the form as developing and I, i- it just wouldn't ring for me, so I changed that to doesn't meet expectations. So, if that's, just if anybody hears.
But wouldn't that be the same as ineffective?
Or needs approv- or is that needs improvement or?
I don't know what's. Stacy.
Okay. Sorry, I'm a pain today. Technology is not my friend today.
Um, I can get it to you.
Oh, you got it. Awesome. Thank you very much.
I can give you an electronic one.
Well, I have that, but then it just doesn't flow well also. Okay. So, starting with performance criteria, one, educational leadership. Now, we're going on a zero to five scale, five being highly effective, four effective, three meets expectations, two developing, which we don't like that word, I guess.
I don't.
One ineffective and zero does not apply. Um, so facilitates the development of and implements a collaborative effort to seek fulfillment and refinement of the educational vision and mission of the Farmington School District and Farmington School Board and setting priorities for the school system.
Okay. What are, so what are we doing? We're gonna read through this?
I'm gonna write what, I guess, and then we'll go from there. That was.
What your top goal?
Take a while.
I, well, that's, that, that, that's why I'm wondering if we.
Let me tell you how I approach, and I always approach it this way when I work in schools. My expectation, when you have a rating system, one through five or whatever, is that everyone starts in the middle.
Right.
You should be meeting expectations.
Yes.
That's the bare minimum, in my opinion.
Yeah.
When you move to that highly effective area or you move over to that ineffective area, then I think that needs to be documented with sort of backup, with examples, with comments, illustrating why, why you went so far in that direction. Um, so what I did was I did the rating. All of them have numbers and I will give this to you. I, I just, this is all, I tried to type it in and it was screwing up the format, so I wrote it in and we'll just make a copy. And then I can just give you this copy, cause I, what I did was, in any area that I felt the need to comment on, I did, I made comments. And then at the end, I did a narrative because there is a narrative section.
Right.
So, I mean, what you, what you fancy.
I know, I just, I, I don't wanna sit here and read three, well, however many, three pages worth, two pages of, and then five, three, four, two, one, doesn't seem effective for anybody. Do we, as a.
Because we can, I mean, what are you looking to do? Find an average on these that becomes Ms. Vaughn's final ratings? An average of the three? Or?
Well, that's.
Or three and a half?
Three and a half.
Oh, yeah, for some people.
I do have, I do have some that I.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, misunderstood.
No, that's correct. I don't know if I should be included, honestly.
Unless we kinda start again and, uh, well, I mean, I would try to print mine not on blank paper. Um, do we make a final, put all of our thoughts on one and present that during public session? Then we're not sitting here, not, I don't wanna use the term waste of time, but all of our time is valuable and the clock is.
That certainly. No. But is it?
Well, it's your last agenda, it's a, it's your last agenda item really. Um, so.
I just think it's gonna take a lot of time that we could.
Did you do comments as well?
Well.
Huh?
Uh, yeah, but they, they're not here and they're.
Oh.
They're there.
In disappearing, reappearing ink here. Um. So, I don't know.
I put a lot of effort into mine.
I know you did.
And so, I, I want to share it, so.
That's.
Obviously. I, I think that some of these areas should be shared in non-public, but Ms. Vaughn has made the decision to have it in public. So, if she's comfortable with that, so am I.
I mean, you're more, I mean, do you wanna read your name?
Sure.
Okay.
Sure.
Point of order?
Sure.
It needs to be a board collaborative decision, not just one board member putting out what he's determined here. It has to be, I would believe, a vote from the board collectively to say, this is your evaluation.
No, 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 he's not reading it as the board's evaluation. He's reading it as his.
His portion.
We, we were asked to do individual ones.
I know, but, but is this not a collective board evaluation? They, are you gonna be the only one speaking tonight, today?
No.
So, this, this is.
I don't think so. This is just mine.
His, his portion and then, you know.
I would like to put everything together in one.
Well, this can be compiled.
Right, that's what I'm saying. Take yours, take.
So, do you.
And then. Handle that rather than to share individually at this point?
I mean, and then read that into the public record is fine with me, but I want it to be fine with you.
So, looking to do that at the next meeting?
Yeah. Sorry.
I think it. I feel that if, Mary, you have yours in front of you, correct?
I do.
So, I feel like if Mary and Joel have theirs and Jess has some information on hers as well, I've shared my piece. You have yours. I feel like it's been on the agenda. I feel like we have people here.
We, I mean, we can do whatever. I just wanna have at one, at some point, I want to have a document that we can place on file or where, do we store these? I assume we do.
It goes in the personnel file.
Yes. Like, I just don't wanna put three or four different things together.
Well, I.
I would like to have a cohesive, nice looking.
I think the overall checklist part of the evaluation needs to be an average of all of our scores.
Right, I agree.
That's what we've always done.
That's what you did last year.
That's what we did last year.
Right. The.
That's.
The corresponding comments. Those are the ones that, again, from my evaluation, I strongly suggest they're done in non-public. I'm gonna say it for a third time. And, and I'm, I'm getting a little, I'm a little uncomfortable, Jeff, with you chiming in.
No, no, I understand. I understand. What I'm saying is, what we're saying is, though, don't you need as a board to agree to that particular?
No, these are not, this is my evaluation as a, as a ten-year member of this board.
No, they're individual evaluations.
But it, but it, doesn't it need to be a collective decision of the board?
If it does.
That that's, that, that's true or not true?
No, because I'm an individual evaluator.
I understand that.
I'm an individual evaluator. In my opinion, of the superintendent's performance.
You're, you're part of a collective.
Uh, uh, it is a collective group, but we were asked to fill them out individually. Now, if we're going to do this differently, then let's do it differently. However, I think it is inappropriate for the record for the superintendent's husband to be commenting during this time.
I'm just asking.
I think it's inappropriate.
I just went based on what we did last year. What we did last year, we read it, we scored it.
Right, we, and we gave comments.
And we gave comments.
I don't know if anybody took notes, but this year I decided to put my comments in writing because I don't, I could not find comments from last year. I just could find the rating.
Cause we just did, yes, cause we did it as a group. We sat and made one clean copy and that was what went forward.
Okay, so I'm gonna just say, Stacy, why don't, sorry, Madam Chair, do you mind? I feel as though this is just becoming.
A lot.
A lot. So, I feel like, let's go down the list. Everyone can give their score, um, right now. And if anyone has any comments that go along with that area, then they can share their comments and we'll move on to the next one.
That, the only problem with that is that learning, uh, listening audience doesn't know what. I mean, if I say, um, one A, I'm gonna give you a six.
It has to be read.
Well, no, I, yeah.
It has to be read, yeah.
It has to be read into the minutes.
Yeah. Okay. Uh, all right. So, back to where we started, yes?
Yep.
Educational leadership facilitates the development of and implements a collaborative effort to seek fulfillment and refinement of the educational vision and mission of the Farmington School District and Farmington School Board and setting priorities for the school system. And again, we are five highly effective, four effective, three meets expectations, two developing, one ineffective. Zero is not applicable.
So, my, I put zeros for where I couldn't rate her. So, I don't want, I'm not gonna put my zeros into your averages.
That's fine.
Okay.
Yep.
And that's what I would say for myself as well.
Right.
Yeah.
Cause that would just skew it.
No, I wanna speak for you, but yes.
Yeah. Right. And I don't want my zeros as not applicable to skew. That's why I wanted to abstain from this. But if you want me to make sure that it's a collective board, that it's a part of it, then I am happy to. To, I'll just, I'll say that.
Okay. Go ahead, Joel.
I read it as a one, ineffective.
Do you have comments?
Um, I do. Uh, superintendent struggled with developing any kind of collaborative effort this year with Farmington School Board, even after changes were made to board leadership, communication was spotty and in my opinion, ineffective.
I gave it a two. Mary?
I have a two and based on my, my comment on that particular one is that it develops, you know, development. What I saw for development and implementation of collaborative effort was learning enhancement and office hours and those are initiated by board. So, I have a two.
Okay.
Learning enhancement was an initiative by the board the years prior.
Okay, so we'll cross off.
Again, I put zero. My comment is, I am new to the board. I do not feel as though it is appropriate for me to evaluate Superintendent Ruth Ellen Vaughn for an entire year, having only been on the board a very short time.
And on a zero as well.
One B, supports policy and strives to improve them.
Three.
Three?
Um.
Three.
Sorry.
Go ahead. We should be going around.
Yep, that's it. Yep.
Um, I went with a two again. As a policy committee member, I did ninety percent of the work to bring almost one hundred policies to the board for review last year, but that's within this time. The last batch of nineteen was done on December twentieth, twenty twenty-two. Other than mandatory, we have not seen a policy since then and that makes it six months. We were bringing fifteen to twenty a month.
So, I, on that one for me, um, I put three meeting expectations. Um, I felt like I could speak to that as I'm on the policy committee um, and have been working with Ruth Ellen Vaughn, um, with Superintendent Vaughn, um, on updating policy. So, I had put three for my short time here.
One C, communicates the educational vision and mission effectively to all stakeholders.
I read it as a one. I rated it as a one and I pointed to communication, again, just lack of communication this year, I seriously question whether all stakeholders understand the district's vision and mission.
Those are two.
Uh, I put zero, not applicable, uh, same comment as my, as one A.
I'm a zero as well.
Mary?
I was at a three, my statement was, other than mission statements posted in the buildings, I'm not sure that stakeholders know or understand our mission or vision. I see it in the buildings, but that's just, that's a three.
Demonstrates knowledge of research and best practices in preschool through grade twelve education.
Four.
Uh, I was a four as well.
Sorry, um, I had not applicable.
Same.
Mary?
I have a three, um, I said, I feel that this originates with the building level staff, not necessarily the SAU staff.
Ensures that policies, procedures and school rules promote a safe, respectful and healthy school environment.
Uh, I have a one. After having several meetings with school staff, I do not feel the environment can be described as respectful or healthy. Staff point to an inconsistency in behavior management and many feel unsupported.
Okay, I think I took that a different way, not towards. I don't know how I took it, I guess, I had a three and I'll just leave it at that.
I had a one, oh, I'm sorry, one A, one A.
Yeah, I, I just, um, I had a zero as not applicable, um, I did have a comment, though, that I've had several staff members, um, and reach out to me recently, um, with concerns around, uh, respectful and healthy school environment that I wanted to make sure was shared, um, with superintendent, the superintendent, so. And I shared a little bit at that last meeting, um, and then just this past week, um, another presentation that came forward, so.
I have a zero. May I ask a question?
Yep.
So in Mr. Scheidman's comment, is that unsupported by me or unsupported by other members of the district?
My interpretation of what's been communicated to me is that they feel unsupported by you.
Did you give yours a?
Oh, sorry, I have a one, um, I. I have a tendency to tune into things like active shooter training, um. Mr. Brown was here tonight and he spoke of his, his demonstration, I mean, his, uh, donation and I have yet to, I, I would bet that three of those units aren't even being used. Um, I. I, I'm concerned with. Physical safety. If it, God forbid, came to that.
Mary, can you, I don't understand what you mean by three of those units aren't being used.
The units that were supplied for the, for the, uh, the ones that.
The app?
Yes, the app, the app, are they being used, are they on the phones, are they?
The, the app was distributed on phones.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we also have another app that was part of the upgrades through the fuse system that the board approved.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and that app frankly does more in some areas than Mr. Brown's app. Um. We have discussed where we're looking to move forward and that's part of what I want to discuss with the board as well. Um, I have shared some of that with Stacy, um. It is not for a lack of safety that we are looking at these bases.
Communicates effectively with the Farmington School Board, staff, students and the community about educational trends, curriculum, needs and instructional programs.
Uh, I was a one, I said again, due to a lack of effective communication, educational trends and curriculum needs, instructional programs are not discussed as regularly with superintendent as they need to be. And I have no, um, nothing to point to that it's discussed at all with, uh, students.
I was a one as well.
I had two, uh, my comment was, I can't recall ever hearing about educational trends at the board level. Curriculum needs to come from Kathleen, instructional programs, well, we've heard, we've heard as a board that we're gonna do a new math program, or we're gonna do with that, but that's sort of an, oh, by the way. The reasoning for introducing new programs and then curriculums and instructional programs and things, I've never heard.
That would in large part be the data that you are presented in those data trends as to what we're seeing and what needs to change and why and what we're doing in response to that.
Okay.
I, I would.
Administers the.
Sorry, can I give mine?
Yeah, oh, sorry, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay, um, I put for, for that one for me, um, I put a three, um. The reason I put a three there is because I feel that my very short time on the board, um, she has effectively communicated the information that I've needed to receive from her, um, but that I could not speak to the staff, students or necessarily the community about the educational trends or curriculum needs. I felt like I didn't have enough information on that, but, um, as far as communicating with me, um, with any of that information, so.
Jess?
I didn't, not write this one, that's a zero.
Okay.
Thank you.
Uh, administers the development, implementation and assessment of educational programs consistent with state and federal laws and standards.
Three.
I have a three.
Are we?
I had just put not applicable.
Okay.
Same.
Annually conducts reviews of the total school program and advi, what's the matter?
Did you?
Oh, I missed three, sorry.
Okay, thank you.
Um. Annually conducts reviews of the total school program and advises the Farmington School Board on recommendations for the educational advancement of the schools.
Three.
Three.
I was a two.
I had put not applicable on that one.
Same.
Okay. Um, moving, does anybody have any comments? Oh, no, move it. Moving on to the next section, which is communication, which this is where it's like, I feel like the last section was, but that's all right. Um, two A, keeps the public informed of the status of the school in the Farmington District as a whole.
Three.
Three.
Two.
I wrote two, but I don't really know why, I, I wouldn't be able to speak to it, this should be a zero, like, I'm just not, I don't know, that must be an error, this should be a zero, I'm a zero.
I put it as a zero.
Okay.
And Susan?
Oh, I'm a three.
Okay.
I think I'm writing mine and I think I'm saying it and I'm not. Um, ensures the meetings of administrators, teachers and other staff members are conducted as necessary for the discussion of matters concerning the improvement and welfare of the schools.
Three.
Three.
I had put not applicable.
Same.
I couldn't speak to it.
Four. Communicates to all staff members directly or through delegation actions of the Farmington School Board relating to policy matters.
Uh, I put a one and the comment was, the communication to staff regarding school board decisions and actions is often inaccurate and causes friction within the educational community.
Um. I. Thought this was a weird question because we only hear about what we're giving to you, if it's, we're not hearing the, yes, Ruth Ellen told me that, you know, some policy, you know, whatever motion we had made and it was something, we hear, I feel like we only hear negative unfortunately, when it comes to that kind of stuff, um. And, and not to say it's all negative, I didn't mean it to come out that way, I just think that that tends to overshadow, um, because if it's status quo and you're getting the information you need, you're, I shouldn't be hearing from you, like, not you.
No.
The masses, um. So I just, I don't think I liked this question, so.
Why? I think this is why having those office hours that we started and continuing to have those will be, will be effective as well.
Good point.
Um. I just don't, I just don't like the question, um, cause I think it skews, I think it skews, so I, I just, I'm a three.
Zero, not applicable.
Zero.
I'm a three, um, I said, I have to, I, I have to assume that there are informed of policy changes, additions or updates, most likely at staff meetings.
Yeah.
I mean, if we do a policy change that affects everybody.
Right.
It should be on a staff meeting agenda, that's the only way I can relate to the question.
It's, it's just a, I. Just don't like that question, sorry.
And a, a good number of the policies that have been updated most recently were financial policies that are primarily SAU.
Right.
Um, not all of them are broadly applicable.
Provides the Farmington School Board ample and timely information in order to make well-informed decisions.
I rated this as a one, um. My comment is, the trend of not giving the board ample time to digest certain information prior to meetings continues, this has been an area of concern for some time now. Often decisions have deadlines and the board feels forced into making uninformed decisions.
I'm a two.
So, um, I did that one, um, I did put a two as well, um, I felt, I feel as though, um, I have been given ample time and in information, um, when it comes to like items on the agenda, but I feel like there were a few issues that I can't speak to in public because they were non-public and it really forced the board to have to make some really tough decisions, um, that otherwise could have been a different outcome perhaps, um, so for me, that was a two for that.
Jess?
Um, I gave a two as well, and the reason that I did that is because I think that, um, I remember at the beginning, Mary, when we switched our meetings to Monday, had asked for the information to be received sooner and, um, I don't think that it has and I think it's because there's too much on your plate, you just can't do it all, so, two.
I have a two, multiple times, information's been put in the folder the same day of a meeting. When asked if we can have more time to review, the deadline is too close to effectively table, then the board is forced into a do or die situation.
Communicates with and understands the needs and perspectives of various community groups.
Two.
I'm a three.
I put a not applicable.
Same.
I'm at a three, um, my answer to that was, when you're approached, I can only think of one time we ever actively sought community input for an event type thing and that would have been sprinkling, but we went out into the community, all the different.
Mm-hmm.
Sources.
I have communication with a number of community groups on an ongoing basis.
And if we don't know about that, we can't apply it to the question.
Attends or delegates a representative to attend meetings of municipal agencies at which matters pertaining to the school system appear on the agenda or expected to be raised.
Three.
I was a four.
I did put a three on that one.
Four.
I was a three.
Oops. Staffing. Implement the New Hampshire standards for teacher evaluation system for all staff.
Oh, I'm a four.
I was also a four.
I put a three.
I'm a zero.
I'm a three.
Fosters an environment that encourages continuous learning and improvement on part of the school staff.
Three.
Three.
I put not applicable, I didn't know.
Same.
I want two on that one, uh, when culture and climate and discipline is at a low, I wonder how much encouragement is taken seriously. Once we remedy the active culture situation, the rest will follow.
Ensures protocols are in place to develop and implement an effective system of staff development focused on improving the educational and operational programs for each of the schools in collaboration with the Farmington School Board administration and the Farmington School District.
Four.
I'm a three.
I had put a three as well.
I, uh, give zero.
Three.
Advocate for staff to participate in conferences, visitations and coursework within the frame of the school district budget and collective bargaining agreements.
I'm sorry, four, is that D?
D, yeah.
Four.
Four.
I had put a three.
I gave my opinion solely on my time as treasurer, so should I give that or should I give it a zero? Just being honest.
It was during the year, it was an observation.
It was an observation while I was in the treasurer and I give a four.
I'm a four.
Keeps the Farmington School Board abreast of staff development priorities, needs and activities.
Two.
Two.
I had put not applicable on that one.
Same.
I have a two, um, basically, since there's no longer a board member on the staff development committee and we never receive information about how staff are or are not reaching their requirements, I cannot assume that it is ongoing.
Hmm, can I comment on that?
Yeah.
But remember that. There's, there's, we've collectively agreed that we're only gonna have somebody on the staff development committee when our staff development plan is up to be rewritten. It was my suggestion a few years back that having a board member on the staff development committee, um, hinders a little bit of the op, the openness, like, they talk about things like, hey, so-and-so's got a few more classes to take or, you know, they're at risk of not getting recertified and I, I, I never felt that a board member really needed to know that until it actually may have happened and we had to deal with it at this level. So I, I don't think that should reflect poorly on with someone.
Okay, well, um. I agree, Joel, I did not have that background, that backup information. If I may, let's move that up to a three. For that exact reason.
Develops and implements a hiring process that complies with applicable state and federal laws targeting the most qualified and competent teachers, administration and staff.
I gave it a one and the reason I gave it a one is because of one word basically, and that's the term competent. The hiring process for administrators needs an overhaul and I know that that involves us as well. I have very little confidence in the process of hiring the most effective administrators in department. I have very little confidence in the process of hiring the most effective administrators and department heads. Quality leadership is seriously lacking throughout the district. There are a few shining stars, however, overall it's an area of great concern.
I.
Now, if we wanted to separate out administrators to teachers and stuff, I'd rank it higher, but since that's all lumped in, that's why I'm at it.
I just thought the question was, are we hiring, are we following applicable laws, which we are, so I just said a three. So. I guess, I don't know.
I had put not applicable.
Same.
Three.
I made it so easy.
Ensures the job descriptions for all staff are developed, remain current and serve as a basis for the evaluation of all Farmington School District personnel.
Three.
Three.
I had put not applicable.
Three.
Three.
Responds appropriately to employee grievances or problems in accordance with applicable school policies, collective bargaining agreements and/or state and federal laws and regulations.
Three.
Three.
I put a zero.
Same.
Not applicable, haven't interned it yet.
I, I don't wanna skew the number I did a zero because I, I don't have a feel for how that's being handled.
Well, it's not skewing it, cause we're not gonna add zeros in, we're just gonna.
Right.
Right, cause there is a.
I don't really know if there's a teacher grievance, I don't know the mechanism in place, I don't know how the conversations are, what's, what the results are, so if I'm just totally unfamiliar, I, I don't wanna.
Establishes personnel procedures that provide information that may be used to advance the quality of the school system, such as exit interviews for departing employees, employee focus group discussions on specific aspects of job performance and duties, questionnaires and/or other means of eliciting staff member feedback.
That was a one, uh, unless I can be proven wrong, I don't think there are virtually no personnel procedures in place to advance the quality of the school system. Most personnel opt out of exit interviews, especially if the superintendent is to be present. Employee focus groups like office hours only exist because the board took the initiative to do that and staff only feel comfortable airing concerns when administration is not present.
I'm a two.
I had put not applicable, zero.
Same.
Um, I had a two and following up on Joel's, I felt office hours is a program initiated by the board. Staff attendance was low when admin was present. The purpose of the meetings is for us to hear from the staff, what they see as needing attention. The presence of admin limits that conversation. Superintendent was not happy with the decision that admin was not going to be in the room and my comment says that speaks volumes to me. We have to be, we have to consider that our staff can come to us within a comfort zone.
And I'm gonna speak to that and say, yes, staff can come to you within a comfort zone and I would welcome that, but I also want to be sure that it's not just a jump of chain of command for the sake of having it. You also are not aware of the number of staff members that I speak to on a daily basis and who come to me on a daily basis. So while I understand that you're seeing this based on what you know and understand, I will counter that there's an awful lot of people who do speak to me individually and are comfortable and connect to me.
An exit interview is not, uh, someone circumventing because they're on their way out the door.
I'm not saying an exit interview is.
Okay, but that's one example.
But in office hours, I wanna make sure that if something is being brought to the board, that there's been an opportunity, that they've come through chain of command as well, that it's not circumventing that. That's where my discomfort level was with that process, not saying that they should not have an opportunity to talk to you. That, I think is a good idea.
I think that's one thing that I had mentioned when I first came on the board about the office hours, when I said I wanted to make sure, like if one of you guys were there who started it, but just to make sure that it, we weren't jumping command, you know, chain of commands and.
I, I too spoke to that.
Yep.
Pretty, pretty eloquently, if I may pat myself on the back for a moment, no, I, no, I was very, very concerned about that. And I would rebut by saying the board has held the staff to that line.
Yep.
I'm only going to give a couple, so.
Financial management demonstrates the ability to perform effective financial forecasting in long and short-term financial planning.
Um, I'm just gonna, if I may.
Yep.
On A, B and C, I'm a one.
Okay.
And the, the, the comment that I constructed, it applies to all three, so rather than to just belabor it. Financial management has been extremely poor, the district is without a business administrator due in part to that individual's failure to provide quality oversight and accurate information. However, the superintendent is not free of that responsibility. That responsibility falls on the superintendent's plate as that position is a subordinate who works closely with the superintendent and under her direct supervision.
Okay. Um, are we, do you, well.
I'm sorry, just put me down for once on the rest and then you can, I'm, I'm gonna take a bathroom break.
Okay, alright. Okay. I'm, I was a three because, well, he just grouped all of his stuff, but again, I've said it before, you're not, you're not a business administrator. That's not your job, but you do obviously, as highlighted recently, mostly, the ability to perform and understand what the needs of the district are. But again, they're not your job, so, but what part of it is your job, you do understand, but I guess the, and may, well, maybe I, I'll just, I'll be, I'll say my comments now as well. For lack of a better term.
Is this for all three or for just one?
Well, this one and then I'll just do numbers, but the buck stops with you. And so it's kind of, yes, you need to know the broad strokes, but I think you may have trusted our previous business administrator too much. And the oversight wasn't what it should have or could have been, I guess. Um, so yes.
Um, I feel like financial management is an area that I could speak to, um, a little bit more just because of everything that we have been dealing with, um, both in public and on public recently. And with the financial, with the business administration, administrator. I felt as though, um, I had to give four A, um, a two.
Uh, I gave it a zero.
Mary?
Um, gosh, I don't. I'm gonna give it a two for all the way down through, but my statement would be, some of the items, these items are within the parameters of the questions as they are presented. However, the lack of leadership and supervision in the area of finance has put the district in turmoil. There have been multiple times when board members requested information and received bad or no answers. Finances are the lifeblood of the district, once they go astray, the district does not function. Instead of staying on top of the issues and not understanding that issues actually exist, this presents to me as epic failure. And by issues not existing, an example of that might be the, um, checkbooks not being balanced for thirteen months.
Supervises the preparation and presentation of the annual budget and recommends it to the Farmington School Board for approval. Joel was a one.
Was a one.
I'm a two.
Uh, that one for me was a zero just because it spoke to the annual budget and recommended it for the school board for approval and I wasn't here for that, uh, so I felt like I couldn't speak to that.
I'm a zero as well.
You got two for me on all of them.
Oh, oh, wha- A, B, C.
A through F.
Oh, alrighty then.
Cause I just had to lump them into one, I, I couldn't separate one financial question from the other.
Yeah, um, okay, so C is, explains clearly the proposed budgets, needs and priorities to all stakeholders.
One.
You're a one, I'm a two.
I was a two as well.
I'm a zero.
And Mary is a two.
Yeah, I guess, and the only other comment I had to, to add to that was some of the information that was presented to us early in the first public participation needs to be addressed.
Wait a minute, what'd you?
Pretty serious.
Oh, sorry, yes.
Pretty serious, well, accusations, demonstrations.
When you said public, I heard non-public.
No, no, in the, no, in the, I'm sorry, you lead first. I'm at a loss.
Did you read, what did you just read, D?
No, C.
Oh, C, okay.
You still good?
Yeah.
Okay.
Ensures financial procedures and accounts are maintained and that audits are performed on an annual basis. Communicates any audit findings by a third party to the Farmington School Board with recommendations for corrective action.
Two.
Two.
Mine was a two as well.
Zero.
We don't have an audit, haven't had an audit discussion yet.
Well.
For me it was the procedures and the accounts maintained, um, and just the discussion that we've had in non-public at our most recent.
Apprises the Farmington School Board of the status of expenditures and receipts on a regular basis.
Three.
Three.
Mine was a three for that as well.
I'm a three.
Mary's a two.
Aligns budgeted funds and human resources to achieve agreed-upon strategic goals.
Three.
Three.
I, I put not applicable, I couldn't speak to that one.
Same.
Operational facilities management. File all reports required by state or federal laws and regulations.
Three.
Three.
I put, uh, I put not applicable.
Same.
Three.
Makes administrative decisions necessary for the effective and efficient operations of the schools. Acts on own discretion when emergency action is, is necessary in matters not covered by district policies. Reports such emergency actions to the Farmington School Board and recommends policy changes as appropriate.
Three.
Three.
I had put a three as well.
Uh, zero.
Three.
Models for all school personnel. The use of data to make well-informed decisions.
A two.
I don't know, I feel like I had a comment for this and I don't know what it was. I hate that I have a blank piece of paper. Uh. I'm a three.
I had put not applicable, but I just had made a note about modeling, like I don't know if she's modeling for all school personnel. I would assume she is, given that administrators and teachers and Kathleen have shared with me and have shared with us the data-driven decisions and, um, even our SRO officer, like using all of that data, so I'd, I would assume, but I, I didn't know. Um, so I put not applicable, so, would like to think she's doing that and modeling that.
Three.
Three.
Supervises and ensures compliance with all laws, regulations and district policy.
Alright, here's my question on this one. As it relates to facilities? Cause, cause that, that, I don't, quite frankly, I can't put my finger on what that really means as it relates to facilities.
Me neither.
Uh, if, if that's, if that's what it means, I, I'm, I'm a, I'm a zero. However, I think this comment needs to be read because if it's, if, cause if, if you read it as is, it's talking about all laws, all regulations and all district policies. I don't know why it's in the facilities area, but it is.
I took it, well, I'll let you read.
So, if I, if I read it that way, it, like again, if it's just for facilities, it's a zero for me and a. If it's all laws, all reali- regulations and all district policies, it's a one. And my comment would be, this winter, due process was not followed in disciplining a high school student. This is not the first time due process has not been followed. An employee of the high school remarked to me that this is the way we always do it here. Clearly, there's no supervision in this area regarding this very important process as it's happened in the past with the same two staff members.
I took it as compliance with, like, fire code. And because laws, regulations and district policies and it's facility, right, that's, yes, that kind of stuff. Um, making sure that our, you know, headcount in the building is not over capacity.
Right, cause it falls under operational facilities management.
That's what I took it as, so I was a three.
I put it as a not applicable, I, I didn't know, I wasn't sure.
Same.
Three.
Develops and implements short and long-term maintenance plans for school buildings and grounds, delegating particular duties as appropriate.
Um, two.
Three.
I had put, um, a zero, not applicable.
Same.
I give a three, um, my comment was I would imagine that this is done by grounds slash maintenance supervisor in conjunction with buildings and grounds committee, which we do still have.
Yes.
So.
Go ahead.
Um, for me it was just the short term and long term, I didn't, I didn't know, cause I haven't, again, been on the board long enough to know, um, Ruth Ellen. I did wanna make the comment though, like when we had the concerns come up around the grounds and for the softball field and the baseball field, I mean, there was just that little bit that I've been on the board, um, I felt like you heard it and you followed up and followed through with that. Um, so if it was based on that short time, then I can, I mean, I'm happy to give it a three. But as far as looking at it as a whole for short term and long term, for the whole building, it was, for me, it was really more around just that, that specific time, so I'm fine with putting a three on there.
Alright.
Um, just based on that, cause I did have that under the comment.
Develops and implements guidelines and procedures governing the use and care of school facilities and property.
Two.
A three.
I had put not applicable.
Same.
It was three, um, my comment was facility use forms, I'm sure those are done.
Alright, and then, do we want, I mean, I don't have my narrative here. I don't know if you want, do we want to read your narrative and your narrative into the public record? Or do you, how do we wanna, what is everybody's feelings at this?
What's the board want, want? Superintendent has expressed what she wants.
Right.
If I read them, I guess, I mean, she won't.
My narrative is that overall, I'm rather disappointed this year with the performance of the superintendent of schools. I believe there to be a damaged culture, district-wide, that she is unable to repair. For many years now, I have asked the superintendent to work on creating a culture where it is okay to respectfully disagree with the boss. A culture where staff members are comfortable airing concerns and sharing alternative ideas.
A culture where staff members are comfortable airing concerns and sharing alternative ideas. This culture does not exist. I am also deeply concerned with the superintendent's opinion of what quality leadership looks like. The track record of district leaders is dismal. As I noted earlier, we have a few shining stars with great potential, but overall, we are weak in the area of quality leadership. We have lost multiple staff members, many of whom point to a lack of faith in leaders. The district is hurting. I believe Ruth Allen Vaughn does not possess the skills necessary to repair the damage. I think it's time for a change, and I would ask Ms. Vaughn to reassess her relationship with this district.
Mary?
I have a, no, sorry. Are you, here, are you good?
Oh, I can go, yeah.
Great.
I, I mean, my narrative and comment was, was small. It was, I chose, uh, not applicable, uh, in many areas, as I was new to the board as of March. Uh, however, I am deeply concerned with the number of staff leaving throughout our entire district, and as a que- as a previous educator, I have to question why.
Um, I said I chose zero on, or maybe an A, I don't know what the right thing is. On many of my statements listed above, because I have yet to see them, I wanted to be sure that my evaluation reflects the information I have received or witnessed since I joined the school board in late March. I do believe that our superintendent's overall performance needs improvement. I'm not sure if we need to hire an assistant to take on some tasks. If the superintendent needs to delegate tasks to other staff, or if there's a lack of skills needed to perform effectively in this role.
During my first year on the board, information flowed freely. I learned where to direct questions and utilize available resources. The district was healthy, teamwork flowed freely, and many innovative and remarkable things were happening. In twenty-two, twenty-three, things changed. The atmosphere, the culture, and climate became adversarial. Morale has hit an all-time low. We see that now with the number of resignations that we are experiencing. Superintendent is our chief operating officer. Responsibilities fall on her to manage or delegate all aspects of the district, not to micromanage, but to lead. Lack of consistent leadership causes chaos. I've seen a smooth operating machine turned into a scattered, disconnected, and often adversarial situation. I hate to use the term out of control, but that's my general opinion. The damage to all pertinent departments is evident. No department left out. There has been no concerted effort to stop and/or repair that. The board has been forced to go outside the responsibilities of the superintendent and take on a role of listener, advocate, and problem solver. I have to question whether the superintendent currently possesses the skill set necessary to bring it all back together. Long-term valuable employees now go out of their way to work around in its, and outside the leadership, in an effort to hold it together. That is not only unhealthy, but unprofessional. We are past the point of no return, and for the betterment of the district, I also ask that you reassess your position with the district.
Um, my narrative, which isn't here, spoke to, um, hiring an assistant superintendent. Um, we had talked about it, we had written job descriptions about it. I think that, you know, we talk a lot about wearing multiple hats in small districts and frankly, being in a small, that's a necessary requirement of working in a district our size. Um, but I think there's something to be said for the last year that it's just been too many hats. Um, and that there's been a lot of work done in the past year that has been great, that's come out of our school district. Um, but there's been a lot of low-hanging fruit that you just don't have time to get to. And I, I don't want you to see hiring an assistant superintendent as a lack of skill on your part. Um, or threatening in any way, cause I can, I, not that you've ever said that, I'm.
I, I brought the model to you.
Yes.
I wrote the job description, I gave you an org chart.
Yep. Um, but I think having an assistant super would make your life easier, would free you up to do the things that you need to do, and not just do something that you need to do to check it off a list, but to also give you time to develop your own skills, to increase your own, like, you don't have ti- yeah, you don't have time to do that. And we've gotten to the point that there have been too many hats. And that's.
I would be happy to follow up on that as well, and I had neglected to, I rewrote this, but, and that part was definitely there. The, the lack of a number two, a su- an assistant, has definitely played into this. We did, you did put a model together. The board approved it, as far as I know?
The board asked me to do that, there's not been an approval of that model.
Right.
Okay, but we also asked to have that position posted.
Add it into the budget. I thought we did.
Well, I thought we had asked to have it posted, because to do it and to put it on a piece of paper and then put it in a folder, isn't doing any of this, I think.
Right. Correct.
I don't recall a directive to post.
Okay, then, I stand corrected.
Uh, you. And I'd rather spend that money, that potential money, on teaching positions.
Okay.
Just for the record.
I don't believe there had been a discussion as far as where that was going. It was brought back to the board this, as requested.
Um, so, now that we have gone through that, should, do you want me to take a no, a clean copy and average all of our?
I mean, that can be what, what gets signed and then.
And, what, and then that part gets, we'll sign that at our next shindig?
I'm happy to share my Google Doc. I can share that with you, Tracy, that one you have mine and then the comments underneath them.
Yep. Um, do you have anything else that you would like to add?
Like, at this point, um, certainly, you've given some things to consider. I have some points that I think that the board may be unaware of, but I would prefer to give a prepared statement to them. Um, I will be developing goals in regard to those areas that have been pointed out, and will be bringing those to the board for approval.
Great.
I just wanna make sure that we have, um, can we just discuss, like, a timeline, um, to just get this to her, so then she, like, is aware of something?
Oh, I was gonna have it this, for our next meeting, just so we can all sign off on it.
Perfect.
Perfect.
Unless.
And it will be, will she, so she'll get a copy of the average and all of the comments prior to that meeting, so she has an opportunity to review it?
I, yeah, if you guys send, oh, I have, you sent me yours, right?
Yeah, and I can send you mine.
Yep.
Okay, I just wanna make sure she has time to review it all, that's all.
Yep. Um. Any other unfinished business? Oh, we did that before that.
Yeah.
Sorry. Um, public participation, anything, anyone? Don't all jump at once?
Oh, sorry, no, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Do you need to deal with any encumbrances, like Mr. Brown mentioned?
So, that was one of the things that we discussed.
Yeah, oh, we did talk about that, yeah.
That because we will be meeting again at least once, if not twice, between now and the end of the year, that I was going to be bringing those encumbrances to you.
Right. Right.
Um, part of that is going to depend upon the extra- extraordinary needs grant pieces, and we have one more quote that's coming in on that. So I wanted to make sure that I had that piece in place too, that I'll have a list of encumbrances for you.
Okay, and extraordinary needs is due on the thirtieth, right?
It's due on the thirtieth, and, um, Kathleen was out sick today, we are, we have one, if not two, more quotes that are coming in on those last data pieces that we've discussed, so.
The deadline is June thirtieth?
June thirtieth for our report of what we've spent.
Our report, okay.
Yeah.
But the funds?
The funds, we, yeah.
So, we, we need to, to show how those have been expended.
Yeah.
Too many grants out there.
I know, right. And which we talked about, uh, we had learning enhancement on Friday, and Ruth Allen, Kathleen and I kinda went over that piece. Um, so, any other public participation?
Two things. Um, we received an email earlier today, the board members, uh, from a resident who, uh, because the superintendent's evaluation was on the public agenda, wanted something that he asked to be read into the.
I didn't get that email.
Oh, well, it says Stacy.
I did.
You're on the list.
Uh, yeah, but look at the email address. I'm not gonna read it out loud, cause it's somebody's email, but it's not Stacy's.
Oh, it's your, it's your other email.
Okay.
Yeah, sorry.
But the rest of us, it went to our RSIU email. Um, and so that member is asking for this to be read, and I figured public participation is the appropriate time, unless the board feels it does not need to be read, but not sure.
No, it was asked.
Public participation, yep.
Dear board members, I am sending this email to give you my assessment on Ruth Ellen Vaughn's performance over the last three years that I was on the board. I was chairman immediately after I was elected, and I spent the next year working with Ruth Ellen to improve the district with the direction given by the new board. Initially, I thought that she was hardworking and cooperative with the board direction. Some issues arose with the town and schools, and I accept, I assess, I assessed that it was on their side, the schools and the town, not Ruth Ellen Vaughn's. Into my second year, I began to question that prior opinion. I increasingly felt that Ruth Ellen was telling me and us what we wanted to hear and intentionally undermining the intentions of the board. Given this concern, I continued to support Ruth Ellen and her position as superintendent. When I gave up my chairmanship of the board in my third year, I continued to see that she was not following the direction of the board and undermining directives set forth by the board. These thoughts I have reflected on greatly over the past year, but I believe it is in the best interest for you to ask for Ruth Ellen's resignation as I feel that she is no longer the right person to be leading the district. Sincerely, Charlie King, former Farmington School Board member and chairman for two years. And I can forward that to you if you want a copy of it.
Please do.
Um, to, to exit tonight on a positive note, not that it's terribly positive, but it's more positive than what we've been doing. I meant to do this at the beginning of the meeting, uh, but our meeting was unorthodox, how it opened tonight, and then we had someone from the crowd kinda jump in.
And before we close, okay, nevermind, I was thinking this, a vote that we didn't, nevermind, thank you.
I know, I skipped over, I.
Before we, before we close, I'd like to, to the board and the members that are here to join me in a brief moment of silence as we remember Esther Parsley. Um, it's important that we, uh, pay tribute to her briefly here tonight, um, as Esther just passed away at eighty-eight years old. And for people who did not know who Esther was, and you had to be living under a rock for the last forty years in town, if you don't, Esther was a longtime um, secretary and employee of the school district, started off as a lunch lady, which I ended up finding out, never knew that. Uh, and her service spanned four decades to the district. She was my elementary secretary, so that's how far back she goes, and, uh, you know, she did it the Esther way. But she was extremely efficient, very independent, but she always worked very hard for this district and, and did things, um, how she felt was the right way to do things. And so, a group of us last week, that all worked together for many years, had a chance to say goodbye at her funeral, but it's appropriate tonight that we recognize her so that the, the public, so if we can have a brief moment of silence at this time for Esther Parsley. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public, public participations, excuse me? Alright, so our next meeting is six twenty-nine.
Which will be a public hearing.
Which is a public hearing. And we have manifests, and I will make a motion to go into non-public session four, under RSA ninety-one A three, two, A, B, C nominations and resignations.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, good night, everybody.